All right, our guest speaker tonight is Commissioner Jeff Culbertson. And thank you so much for joining us. We're anxious to learn a little bit more about the challenges that our Leavenworth County faces. And then specifically, we wanted to learn a little bit more about property taxes. So with that, Jeff, how about giving us a little bit about your background? And when you were initially elected and what part of the county you live in?
Okay, well, hello, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight. Like Sherry said, I'm the first district county commissioner. So my district basically goes from Shawnee Road north to the Ashland County line. Out of five districts, mine's the very north district. So I've actually been working for the county for over 35 years. Started out in Public Works and planning zoning and moved into GIS. And worked for the appraisers office for about 25 years. So I'm very familiar with how the appraisal system works. All the way from going out and doing the field work to mapping, parcel mapping, to the actual appraisal camera system. So I think that it kind of uniquely qualifies me to explain a lot more than I think the other commissioners, you know, are learning this as we go too. So I think that'll help a lot. What I was gonna do is just read you the speech that I had presented last night at the Republican Town Hall meeting. It's just about 10 or 15 minutes long, kind of touches on a little bit of everything. And then I'm a lot better at questions than answers than I am presenting. So I'll just get through this part and then we can get into, you know, what you guys really want to know about. That way, you know, I can make sure I answer your specific questions. Can, can everybody hear me okay? I have a tendency to mumble and talk low, so I'll try to talk as loud as I can. So when I started at the county, I commissioned and at the county commissioner's office, I had a list of things that past commissioners had put in place that I knew were mistakes that would cost taxpayers money. Our number one priority is always lower taxes. So we immediately went to work to remedy a lot of those issues. We also inherited a lot of problems that we're slowly but surely working out. It takes a while, though, for actions to show up as far as budgets and finance goes. The first year this commission was all together, we held the county mill levy flat to cover inherited issues until we could make some changes. But then every year since then, we've lowered the mill levy every single year. And now we have the lowest mill levy that the county's had in nine years. In perspective, we actually have the eighth lowest county mill levy in the state of Kansas. So and relatively, that means you could only live in seven other counties out of 105 counties in Kansas and pay less taxes to the county. I think this is a little known fact and a lot of people are confused about the mill levies and how they pay on their property taxes. Depending on where you live, your property taxes are derived from about eight different mill levies. The county being only one of those eight. That means the county commission does not control seven out of the eight mill levies that are on your tax bill. So on your tax bill, you pay a township mill, a cemetery mill, a library mill, a junior college mill, a sewer district mill, a benefit district mill. The biggest two on your tax bill are the school mills. One of those is set in stone at 20 mills that can't even be adjusted, no matter how much the valuations go up. But the one mill that we do control at the county commission is the eighth lowest in the state of Kansas, which is both remarkable and difficult to maintain because of several contributing factors. The biggest being that our county has 35% tax exempt due to the federal government, the state, the school, and the church presence in our community. That means that only 65% of us are paying all the bills. This makes it very difficult to provide infrastructure and services in proportion to our population. Our mill levy should be much higher to provide the level of services a community of our numbers should have. But a sort of triage has been happening over the past several decades because past commissions have either not understood the real problem or picked the path of least resistance to appear to address the issues, when in fact, they have basically painted us into a corner. There's only so much cutting you can do before there's nothing left to cut, unless you want to start drastically noticing assets and services missing to a dangerous level. I'll just throw out there one example. The current road and bridge forecast budget allows us to replace one failing bridge per year. It's pretty simple math. We have 150 bridges. They last 50 years. That means you need to replace three bridges a year or start figuring out which bridges you want to start closing. This is one of the budget line items that past commissions have always cut because it's one of the least visible aspects of budgeting. The easiest can to kick down the street until you can anymore and we're almost there. It's always a balancing act each budget cycle. We do not have the money to cover everything we need. So we try and figure out what is absolutely necessary and what is not. I wish we were having budget discussions like, where are we going to put the new water park? Or where are we going to build the roller skating rink for the kids or subsidized housing? But our budget conversations are more like, let's buy the gray gravel instead of the brown gravel because it's, even though it's 20 cents a ton higher, it lasts longer. It's not very glamorous to replace a million dollar bridge. People don't really see a bridge. They just drive over it without noticing if it's old or new. But if you spend that same million dollars on paving a gravel road, they really notice it. But which is more important? A lot of times you don't go by facts. You have to go by perspective. If people don't see what they're getting for their money, they don't think they're getting anything. Politics and budgeting, that's why you may have noticed we've paved more gravel roads, especially down in the south end of the county than we've done ever before. And sure, we've done a lot of things in-house to help lower the county budget. Some of those include not paying rent anymore for a council on aging and Mills on Wheels Department and the extension department. And we talked to St. Luke's folks into donating the Cushing Hospital building back to the county. So we got the building for free and not paying a rent anymore for the council on aging and putting them in that building will save the taxpayers about $100,000 a year. Also, all the remodeling costs and the continued maintenance of the building and even the utility bills will be offset by renting area in the building out to private firms. Making sure that those private firms are medical based keeps our exemption status on the building to save the taxpayers even more money. So the end result is a self-sufficient county operation that pays for itself from front to back. Another one is you might have seen the brand new cars, different county departments are driving. I've heard a lot of kickback over that with the perception that costs taxpayers more money, when in fact, the opposite is true. The previous procedure on county vehicles was pretty much only the sheriff and public works bought new vehicles. And then those vehicles were handed down to all the other departments for free once they got about 300,000 miles on them. I did a five-year study on all these free vehicles and how much maintenance, tow bills, and repairs were costing each department. We were spending about five times more money on keeping those old cars on the road than we were spending on the brand-new leased vehicles. The savings to the taxpayer is easy to show on paper, but the perception is difficult to get across to people. Personnel policy changes, the county is not insulated from the workforce issues that everybody is seeing today. We've lost 87 employees in the last 12 months out of 450 people. Trying to attract employees and retain current ones and keep the budget low is extremely difficult. One thing we did was bring back sick leave pay to retirees who had a lot of sick leave built up. Again, past budget cuts discontinued the county practice of paying retirees their built-up sick leave. It was a big hit to a department's budget when somebody retired and they had $35,000 worth of sick leave built up. So I get why past commissions cut this practice out, trying to save taxpayers money. But by cutting benefits makes it difficult to hire new employees and retain existing ones, especially when you reward the habitual sick leave user and penalize the good employee that never called in sick. But I said, what if we can pay their sick leave out and still save the county money? People don't retire early if they have to pay $1,000 a month in health insurance. So they would wait until they qualified for Medicare. But if we pay the built-up sick leave to somebody at $1,000 a month instead of the whole $35,000 at once, that's only $12,000 a year. So the long-term employee making $80,000 a year goes in and retires. Everyone in that department shuffles and moves up the chain. And actually, the new job in that department is always an entry-level job for about $30,000 a year. So you traded the $80,000 a year salary for a $30,000 a year salary, saving $50,000. Even when you subtract the $12,000 a year for paying them their sick leave out gradually, you're still saving the county $38,000 and you brought back a benefit to that retired employee. And that's per incident. So if you have a couple of people retire in a year, that's 38,000 for each, each incident. But enough of the little things that we're doing. The biggest change this commission has committed, committed to doesn't even fall under our purview. We understand where the real change needs to happen. We're trying to educate as many of our constituents as possible to make a real difference. All these small groups outraged by high taxes can make a real difference if they use their efforts and influence in the right areas. Spinning their wheels because they don't understand the county commission doesn't control how much you pay in taxes will not bring about the change that we need at the state level. Working with our local state officials is key to fixing the big problem. So in the late 80s, the state realized every county was not assessing property fairly. For example, my mom and dad bought their house in 1930 for $30,000. In 1990, it was worth about $300,000, but it was still on the tax rolls for $30,000 because the counties never updated their values. I built my house in 1990. They come out and appraise it for about $200,000. So I'm paying on $200,000 assessment. They're paying on a $30,000 assessment, assessment on a $300,000 house. So I'm paying way more taxes than they are, 15 times the taxes they're paying. So reappraisal was born. So new laws mandated that every county put current market value on every house every single year. This system makes sure that you pay your fair share of taxes relative to everyone else. But it uses a system that has no regard for how much income you make. It's based on how nice of a house you can afford. The inherent problem is you might have been able to afford that house while you're working, but not so much when you retire. Another huge problem with this system is it is not designed to work well with an unstable market. When you have huge increases in sale prices, it directly affects the elderly in the worst way. A house is only worth market value if you're selling it. If you're staying in the house, you don't care what the market value is. You only care about how it affects your taxes. Until the state either comes up with another source of income to offset the taxes that we generate from real estate taxes, we are doomed to pay high real estate taxes. Remember one that was advertised that all the money generated from the state lottery would go to our schools? I pulled up some old ads and I thought maybe I just wasn't remembering, right? But no, they said when we passed the state lottery, that all that money would go to the schools. Today's $0 goes to the schools from the state lottery. I don't understand how that happened, but that was all at the state level. So we've got to find another source for taxes. Oklahoma and Texas have cheap real estate taxes because they have oil taxes. Colorado and Missouri have cheap real estate taxes because they have tourism. Kansas has no other source of big income. Or until they decide to shift more of the burden from real estate to income and sales tax, because there's three legs of taxation in Kansas, income tax, sales tax, and real estate taxes. They need to shift a bigger percentage of their income over to income and sales tax. Until they do that, we're still going to pay higher real estate taxes. I had a two-hour conversation the other night with Senator Tyson. And her and some of our other local state officials are on board with creating a task force to develop a plan to fix this system. It's going to be a long, drawn-out, and difficult process. There is no simple answer. But I can see some light at the end of the tunnel finally. Our current legislators did not create this problem, but they inherited it. My dad had a saying, "I know it's not your problem, but it's, I know it's, I'm sorry. I know it's not your fault, but it's your problem." And I think that holds true to exactly what's going on with this. But our local representatives are fully understand this is our problem and they are working on a remedy. Our current county commission has been extremely proactive in finding solutions to this issue, even though the corrective action is not in our wheelhouse of authority. Most people never even heard of the LABTR funds or the demand transfers until this commission brought it to light. They are another example of how our local and state representatives are working with us to find solutions, both short-term and sustainable ones. We were going to join about eight other counties in a lawsuit against the state, kind of like the schools did, over the LABTR funds because they'd passed a law saying they don't have to follow the law. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the LABTR funds. LABTR actually stands for Local Advilarm Tax Relief. These funds were set up 20 years ago to offset the high taxation problems with each county. The state got in trouble financially, so the lowest hanging fruit evidently was the county LABTR funds. Leavenworth County should get about $2 million every year from the state for the LABTR funds. Instead of paying us that, it's, it's actually a state statute that they're supposed to pay us that. Instead of doing that, they passed a law saying they don't have to follow the law to pay us the LABTR funds. Instead of, you know, working on a way to figure out how to pay us, they worked on a way to figure out how not to pay us. So that's one of the issues that we run into. That's the end of what I was talking about last night, other than the video I shared. And I think you shared it too, the 152 bridge. So one last plug I have is I truly believe that you can only rely so much on others and you should do anything you can to help yourselves. Mostly, I've been talking about how to fix the entire state's problems, but one idea to boost our local economy enough that we could drastically lower our own taxes. If we were to build a bridge improving our connectivity between our community and the Kansas City metropolitan area, we would insulate ourselves from high taxes. The county commission has completed a preliminary feasibility study that shows you, you can get from QuickTrip in Lansing to the I-435 and 152 intersection in six minutes. So we are reaching out to local officials and cities within our community to get this new bridge idea rolling. We've met with Platte County officials, KDOT, MoDOT, Minnetec Regional Council, KTA, and several other entities to proceed with a regional transportation study. My hopes are that this eastern gateway concept will surface to the top of the list on what our local area needs. If you are five minutes from a community, you become part of that community. I don't know if any of you have been to Liberty, Missouri lately, but if you haven't, you need to drive out there and see that they were, they were struggling in many of the same ways that we are, slow business growth, lack of industrial relief for tax base, even minimal residential expansion, until 152 highway happened. Since they were connected to 152 highway, they have exploded in residential business and industrial growth. We would be the mirror image of Liberty, Missouri if we connected to the west end of 152 highway via this new bridge. When people see that it's only six minutes from QuickTrip in Lansing to 152, our business parks would fill up overnight. Everyone knows getting business and industry is the key to lowering taxes. Figuring out how to make this happen is our job. Ingress and egress to the Kansas City area, I think, is the answer. And then I played the video for them. And that's about it. But I wanted to kind of go back on the taxation process. I don't think a lot of people realize the county is the messenger. So when you get your tax bill, it comes from the county. The county appraiser appraises your property. So I know the perception over the years has always been, well, the county is why my taxes are so high. And almost the opposite is true. The one mill levy that we control, we've lowered every year. But we can only lower that one part so much. It adds up to about 26% of your taxes. And actually, if you look at our budget, half of our budget, that 26%, is a lot of state unfunded mandates within our own budget. We wouldn't even have a county appraiser if it wasn't for the state of Kansas. They're the ones that make the county appraiser have a job. CASA is another unfunded mandate. The state says you will have a CASA department, but they don't give us any money for it. So we have to use county money to fund CASA. District Court, I mean, the list goes on and on. I would say at least half of the county's budget is state unfunded mandates. So I think that's the biggest misconception is we're reaching out to all these other cities and schools. We've set up a series of meetings hoping that we can explain to them that everybody's got to chip away at this a little bit. What's happened usually in the past is the schools just raised at whatever they wanted to because they knew that the county is going to catch the heat when people's taxes go up. So we're trying to explain to them that they've got to do their fair share, you know, especially in this year when the valuations have jumped up so much. And so far, everybody's been on board with it. I know the cities are. They understand that the valuation's jumped up quite a bit. So they've already talked about doing their part and cutting their mill levy as much as possible. But that's about all I've got really to present. You guys have any questions?
There's a question in the chat. Has anyone with the county commission considered indexing the county mill levy with increases or decreases of property values?
I'm not sure what that means, indexing as far as like what's happened over the last several years or?
Steve, do you want to explain that anymore? Since that's your question, my interpretation is that, you know, if it goes up, you know, like adjusted based on how the property values increase or decrease. Is that the correct interpretation, Steve? I don't think you've come off.
So if that's kind of what it means, one of the things that we always do, we don't even look at the mill levy, as far as the county commission and the county mill levy. We don't even look at the mill levy. That's kind of a byproduct. Basically, this commission, since I've been here for the last four years anyway, I can tell you, we look at last year's budget and our goal is to remain revenue neutral, meaning we're not going to add any services or any assets or people or anything. We're going to keep the budget exactly like it was last year, except you have to raise it by the cost of living. An example of that is gas was $1.50 a gallon two years ago. It's $4 a gallon now. We have 400 fleet vehicles in the county. There is no way we can remain revenue neutral in our fuel budget line item. It just can't happen. So that means we got to cut somewhere else. What are you going to cut? Like I said in the beginning, our budget has been cut so much, we're not adding anything at all. We're just trying to stay afloat, is stay the same. So even though we've lowered the mill levy every year, the last four years, that's just, like I said, kind of a byproduct. All we've done is taken the year before budget and raised it almost the cost of living. We still even stayed under the cost of living. So as far as indexing it, we've kicked around the idea that if we could do it locally, but we can't. That's, that's a state law. That's, that's state statute. We can't say, what I would like to do is keep everybody's values under the cost of living rate. So instead of you getting your valuation notice and your valuation went up 20%, it can only go up 3% the cost of living. Now, if you sold that house, then it could jump up to the 20% increase. The new buyer doesn't, they're not used to paying what the taxes were before, so they won't know the difference. But the people that are staying in that house, I would like to only raise that valuation, the cost of living, 3%. Sort of keep two different value lists or roles. One is the current market value and the other one is the cost of living raise. I'd like to do that, but we can't do that. It's all state statute. We have to put current market value on everybody's property. So if that's the kind of indexing that he might be talking about, then yeah, we've, we've thought about it. We talked about it. We'd like to do that, but we're not able to by state statutes.
Is that the type of change that you'd foresee the task force exploring?
Yeah, I think the biggest problem is when we went through reappraisal in 1990. I started here in 1985, so I went through reappraisal and I saw we spent trillions of dollars on reappraisal. It started out with when they said, well, not all the counties are doing this, right? The first thing we need to do is fly new aerial photography, remap every parcel and start with a new, fresh set of parcel maps. And then look at every single house, send an appraiser out in the field to look at every house, pull every deed out of the registered deeds office and map those legal descriptions. I mean, there is a lot of work that went into this system. The CAMA system itself, computer-assisted mass appraisal software, went through so many tweaks. And back then, just aerial photography for Leavenworth County was $300,000. Computers were expensive, software was expensive. So I think one of the big problems is the state said, man, we spent trillions of dollars on this system and now you're going to tell me it doesn't work? They just don't want to accept that. So a lot of the people are gone, so that's not so much of a problem, I think, today. I think the biggest problem is even though a lot of the people are gone, the new people don't really understand what the problem is. And that's where this commission, I've never seen a commission like this before in 35 years, spend so much effort trying to educate our state legislators on where the problem really is. You know, us cutting the mill levy is, is a Band-Aid. That's not the real problem. The real problem is this system doesn't work well when you have such an unstable market where houses are jumping up, you know, 300% in five years. It's, it's insane. But that's, that's where the change needs to come, is the system itself. Like I said, either find another source of income to lower the reliance on real estate taxes or shift the percentage to sales tax and income tax. Those are a lot more fair system of taxing than this one that says how nice your house is, is how much taxes you should be able to afford.
We have another question. What is the estimated cost of a new road to the Kansas City area and how feasible is it? I think they're talking about the bridge that you.
The new 152 bridge. $10 million was thrown around. It's hard to say. We had private investors that wanted to build it and make it a toll bridge. There was a small group that got together that I think has a vested interest in the Centennial Bridge and they were worried at one point about losing Centennial Bridge. So the private investors, I think, kind of backed off of the project. Time-wise, you know, anywhere from three to 10 years would be the project length, I would say. And the first thing everybody asks when I present this project is how much is it going to cost? And where's the money going to come from? Well, I can tell you from working at the county, so many projects have been done that the money wasn't there when we planned it. We just put the project on the shelf, ready to go. And then when the money shows up, the first thing you do is pull something off the shelf. So my goal is just get this thing on the shelf. If this Biden, a cat trillion, infrastructure money ever comes through, the first thing they're going to say is, here's the money. What do you got to spend it on? And that happens more often than not, is just getting the plans on the shelf is, is the first to success for something like this.
Okay, are there other questions? Oh, here's one. Has the county commission talked with school districts about limiting or managing their budgets like you've been talking with the city councils or commission?
Yeah, we asked. We reached out to the schools to have meetings like we've been doing with the cities. We haven't got a lot of response back. And, and that's been the case, you know, for, for years, the school. We, we don't have any control over the schools. I think they kind of take it as we're trying to tell them what to do, which we're not. We're just wanting to kind of have a round table discussion, you know, about things. You know, one of the things, the mill levy for the school, the 20 mills is set in stone. No matter how much the valuation goes up, the state gives the schools 20 mills. To me, that's guaranteeing a windfall of, of money because when the valuations jump 20%, that 20 mill. that twenty mills is going to be a lot more money generated for them automatically. Schools tend to work from the bottom line up. They use last year's mill levy and see how much money that's going to bring them. They don't do it like we do where we say, we're not even looking at the mill levy. We're just looking at our budget. Keep it the same as last year, add the cost of living. What's the mill levy end up being for that? They don't do it that way. They say here, a mill levy last year was sixty. How much money are we going to make this year off of a sixty mil, mil levy?
Okay, another question. What percentage of tody, total county population lives outside city limits? Does the county provide services for inside city limits?
Some we do. Um, the ambulance service is countywide, including the cities. Our, our EMS does the cities. Um, our sheriff's department does Easton City and Lenwood City. Um, but all the other cities have their own police department. Um, all the cities have their own fire department except Fire District One, that's Lansing City and two townships, High Prairie and Delaware. Population wise, uh, I don't really know people. I can tell you there's thirty-three thousand parcels in the county. Six thousand parcels are in the rural area, not in city limits.
Well, and council on aging and the district court services.
Those are city, yeah, those are city, uh, the transfer, transfer station is county run, but it's city, all the cities use the transfer station. Um, Fort Leavenworth uses our EMS service. I've been trying to get a pilot check from the feds. Pilot check is a payment in lieu of taxes. So when I was talking about earlier, thirty-five percent of our county is exempt, not paying any taxes. That's a big one. They use our ambulance service, but we don't get a penny off the for, for our ambulance service. So I've been trying to get a pilot check for, you know, just reimbursements for what, what they're using. The funny thing about that is everybody I talked to on the fort and I've been out to DC to talk to them about this pilot checks. They pay pilot checks for all the Department of Interior facilities like national parks. And there's a county in Montana that's eighty percent Yellowstone National Park. That county couldn't function if they're eighty percent exempt. So the federal government writes them a pilot check. But they don't write pilot checks for Department of Defense facilities because they usually come with a lot of jobs. So they feel it's a trade-off for your local economy to provide all these jobs. So they don't think you need a pilot check. And I said, that probably would work for some places, but when you go up here to Fort Leavenworth and most of the county employees' tags are from Missouri, we're not yet, and I don't think a fair trade for jobs versus pilot checks.
Okay, new, new question. What is done with vehicles that the county wants to replace? If auctioned, how is that announced?
Uh, Purple Wave. All of our used vehicles go on Purple Wave. There's some on there right now, matter of fact.
I think I've seen public notices in the newspaper too for those.
Yeah, yeah, we published it in the Leavenworth Times is our official paper. So we'll, we'll publish that they're going to be on Purple Wave. The Leavenworth County website's the best spot. Um, go to Leavenworth County webpage and, and I think it's under information tab. And it'll show you which vehicles are going to be up for sale, offered on Purple Wave, but we sell them all through Purple Wave.
I hear a lot of people talking about revenue neutral, trying to stay revenue neutral. And you touched on a little bit about that in your, um, in your opening. In order for the county to remain revenue neutral, what, what, what would need to be cut? Where, where would you see that cuts would need, would occur?
So Senate Bill thirteen uh presented what a, a lot of junior senators and representatives thought was a new concept, uh, make all the counties and cities remain revenue neutral and that'll fix all the problems. Senate Bill thirteen didn't fix anything for Leavenworth County. It, it made us say, if we're not going to remain revenue neutral from last year's budget, basically keep the exact same dollar amount from last year to this year in our budget. We had to have a public hearing and announce to everybody and vote on it. We already did that. We've always done that. We've always had public hearings. We've always had it um, on YouTube when we were approving the budget and we would announce this is going to be uh, whatever the increase is over last year. So um, revenue neutral just basically means keep the same exact dollar amounts you had last year. There, like I said before, there's, there's little things that we've been doing, um, like some of the things I touched on uh, that the county's doing to try and trim the budget. But over the, when, when I was in GIS, um, we were told for seven years straight to turn in a five percent cut budget. No matter what, no matter if we needed something or any, anything had to happen, we had to turn in a five percent less budget than we did the year before. We did that for seven years. That's thirty-five percent. Actually, it's more than that because when you cut a little bit each year, it, it's compound. So there's a seven-year period where most departments cut their budget already thirty-five percent. That happened ten, fifteen years ago. And like I said, the schools don't cut their mill levy, their city don't cut theirs, township doesn't cut theirs. The county has always said, well, we're going to try to help the taxpayers out because we know that times are tough. So we're going to cut a little bit more. I had a whole list. I couldn't find it. We used to have a nursing home, county-run nursing home in, in Leavenworth on Broadway. We used to have a health department inspector for restaurants. We used to have a brush crew that went out and turned the brush on the side of the road. We used to have so many services that we've cut. We used to blade uh residential driveways uh once a year. We've cut so many things out. There is nothing left to cut. And I know everybody says, well, there's always something to cut. I'm telling you, working here thirty-five years and being as intimate with all the county budgets as I am, the only things left to cut, you're going to start really noticing. When the four-year on the courthouse uh brick was falling in, we had to find the money to fix that. I said, don't fix it. Board it up with plywood. And that will get the point across to the taxpayers, how dire straits the county budget is. Can you imagine driving by the courthouse and seeing plywood on, on the windows? I mean, that's the situation that we're in. So this revenue neutral thing, it's, it's a great concept. It's just, it's not realistic. Especially when gas has gone from a dollar fifty a gallon to four dollars a gallon. It's no different than your own household. If, if you uh, you know, you got to pay more gas to get to work, you're going to have to cut it somewhere else. But eventually you're going to have to get a second job. There's nothing left to cut. The county doesn't have that luxury to get a second job. So it makes it very difficult when there's nothing left to cut.
Okay, we have another two questions here. What urban programs are being considered to rezone residential lots to multifamily tiny homes, accessory dwelling or accessory, accessory dwellings to increase tax rolls?
Um, County Road One corridor I know has, has been rezoned to do exactly that. You know, when we got that I seventy interchange ten or fifteen years ago, I don't know why the county commission didn't go ahead and rezone that. Um, they just kind of, they put it a moratorium on it. So you couldn't even get building permits because they hadn't done anything with it, but they weren't actively doing anything with it. This commission actually went on through with rezoning the County Road One corridor. And, and everything that you just mentioned, there's multifamily, uh, there's tiny homes, there's industrial business, all that in that County Road One corridor. Uh, also the comprehensive plan that we adopted allows for a lot more of that. And that's one of the other things that this commission is doing is, you know, we're trying to embrace that we're a bedroom community to Kansas City instead of fighting it. Everybody I know has the same concept. I even have the same concept. I want to stay rural. I want to keep our rural atmosphere and our rural um values. The real, the, the realistic side of it though is we are in the next ring from the Kansas City metropolitan area. Everybody wants to live in Leavenworth County and work in Kansas City. So a lot of the comprehensive plan changes we have uh, and, and from the surveys, uh, eight thousand surveys we took in said that's what we want to, to happen. The difficult part is stay rural, but then the second half of their sentence is always, and keep my taxes low. It, it just doesn't work like that. The only way to keep your taxes low is to add more rooftops. It's simple math. If you've got a bill and you divide it among five people, if you can divide that same bill among ten people, it costs them half as much. It's just the way it works. What was that other question?
Well, I will be a devil's advocate is we've been adding houses for a long time and it hasn't helped.
And, and I know it doesn't seem like it's helped.
Yeah.
Because inflation has gone up and the cost of everything has gone up. So just as soon as we do add a couple of houses, thinking we can lower the taxes a little bit, the, the costs go up. So the only answer to that is think about how much it would have went up if we didn't have those houses because that's exactly what's happening. The, the houses we're adding definitely help the taxes. You just don't really see it because the costs keep going up as much as the, the tax base we're increasing.
Yeah. Okay, here's the next question. Could the county inform nonprofits or other entities about the auction? Not everyone reads the Leavenworth Times.
Auctioned on vehicles. Yeah, I mean, we can do whatever somebody uh thinks is a better way to advertise. Um, however, they think that would be. I mean, we have a Facebook, uh, county Facebook page. I think they advertise it on there. And I can find out though, and then if anybody's got any ideas on a better way to advertise, we sure do.
And I think it's also educating the nonprofits to go check the website or knowing that the auction is going to occur. Okay, one more comment. Uh, we have too many lots in the city limits that are so tiny, the setbacks would only allow for a tiny home. Which, that's more of a city issue, right?
Yeah, cities, I don't really control any of that. And I'm a big tiny home advocate. We, we actually changed the tiny home resolution uh since I started. You couldn't have tiny homes in the county until I started. So I added that to our building codes to where you can have tiny homes in the county now.
Can you put a tiny home on an existing lot with a house and so make, okay?
You sure can. Say you have a mother-in-law or something you wanted to take care of. You could put a tiny home in the backyard, take care of.
Okay, here's another one. Uh, why would we give new businesses big tax breaks for long periods of time?
I'm probably talking about IRBs, industrial revenue bonds. Um, it's a trade for jobs. Um, so are industrial parks. The reason we want to get them filled up is to create jobs for the local economy. Uh, it's, it's a practice that's uh, across the country. Um, first thing a business does when they call us, say, hey, Arkansas is going to give us a lot, hundred acre lot and uh, abate our taxes for ten years. What can you guys do for us? So that's, that's a game that's been played forever. Um, it's, it's just a, 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 you know, incentives to get that company to come here. Usually it's ten years and it steps down to where uh, first year it's hundred percent exempt, second year it's ninety percent exempt. And then by the tenth year, they're paying full taxes. Problem is you get into a situation like Cerner at Legends, they got a ten-year abatement on taxes. They haven't even been there ten years and then they closed. So they never paid any taxes and now they're closed. So one that county didn't see any. You know, the, the idea is after ten years, then you're getting the tax money and you've got all the jobs they created. So you take that risk.
This is from Angelina Lawson. I have a bill in the State House right now to have a statewide land bank through the treasurer's office. Would Leavenworth County benefit from listing or moving to a land bank?
I'm, I'm kind of hot and cold on land banks. The city of Leavenworth just approved a land bank. If they're used in the right way, I think they're great. But they always have a potential for the entity to take advantage of people, I think. So depending on how you use them, they could be a good thing. Um, they could clean up some of the delinquent properties, get them back on the tax rolls. They can clean neighborhoods up. Um, if you've got a blighted property in the neighborhood, they can do a lot of good things. I think inherently they're a good idea. You just have to kind of be careful who's running them.
Okay, um, I guess one last, oh, here comes another question. Uh, let's see here. Oh, this is part two. There is an urban fringe drop-off cliff of public services as the metro expands. Builders are not leaving Johnson County and developers are willing to build sister development sites to help counties develop the public sewer lines, public water and heat. Angelina, did I, do you have anything to add on that? I didn't see that second part.
Yeah, sorry. I'm ti- trying to type this little kind of keyboard on my phone. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, there just seems to be such an urban uh fringe drop-off where the public services that are the requirements for the criteria for developers and builders to come in. And then you get to these cliff drop-offs, septic tanks, sewer lagoons, well water, propane, where the developers will not go to. Uh, so you, you have this clash between the rural and urban where that's a way to keep the urban contained. But then you have the backdraft of all those, you know, apartment buildings starting to go higher and higher in Johnson County because they, the development, it's not there. Does Leavenworth have plans to help build out some of these public lines to allow for more of the expansion and breathability, uh, so to speak?
Not so much on the county level. Um, you know, we had presented urban growth areas. Um, typically they're like a three-mile ring around every city limit. So that within that three miles, Platte County's done this. They got into, the county got into the sewer system, sewer, sewer business. They actually built county sewer systems to aid and, and uh, help, you know, uh, residential growth. Leavenworth County is not in a position, I mean, we're trying to figure out how to pay our electric bill. So we don't have the funds or the the resources to get into the sewer business. But something that always comes up, people say, you know, we're, we shouldn't allow uh, these two and a half acre lots in the, in the county. Um, because we're stretching our uh, resources too thin. You know, I don't, I don't see that at all. We're not hearing that from anybody. Um, if you want to build on a, a two and a half acre lot out in the county, propane is readily available to anybody. Um, so that's not, so gas is not an issue. Electric is free uh, to hook up. Uh, West Dars and Jefferson Electric have no issues with hooking up as many electric uh poles as you want. Every water district I've talked to is asking us to uh, do some sort of a, a rebate on building permits to try and increase more growth in, in their districts. They're, they're trying to get more water district customers. So there's no issue with getting water. Um, I talked to Andy about uh sheriff's service. He said, we don't have any issues providing service to the county. Uh, EMS fire the same way. All the fire districts uh were asking for more homes because there for a while, the ISO ratings were really high for everybody out in the county. So until they actually added enough houses in each fire district, they couldn't afford pumper trucks to get uh, one pumper truck in each fire district drastically lowered everybody's ISO ratings. That only happened by uh, adding more residential houses in those fire districts. Alexandria Township Fire Department right now is only four firemen. The only way you're going to get any more volunteer firemen in Alexandria is some more people are going to have to build out there. I mean, I'm not going to get, guarantee you that anybody that builds out there is going to get on the fire department, but I guarantee you, if no more houses get built out there, you're not going to get any more firemen. So as far as being able to uh, help the construction in the rural area, the county's not really going to get into the business of doing that, but um, the, the, the easiest way that we helped that out was the comprehensive one, changing and, and uh, making some of the rules more lax so that it, it was easier for the developer.
I would say, I think one of the things that it seems like is happening as more residential housing is grows out into the rural areas, the expectation of some then that are living on the gravel road is that that road's going to become paved someday because.
That is the biggest.
Right, they realize living on a gravel road isn't necessary. Right, they realize living on a gravel road isn't necessarily that fun, right? It's not great.
And the, and there's the two differences in the north half of the county and the south half of the county. So my district, you don't have very many people that moved out of Kansas City onto a small tract. And then now they want their gravel road paved and they want a sheriff to their house in sixty seconds instead of twenty minutes and et cetera. But in the south half of the county, that is what we see every day. Everybody down there, you know, moved out of the city onto a gravel road and they didn't think about a lot of things. Internet service is not as good. We got dust now. There's noise. There's no noise ordinance in the county. I mean, the list goes on. They want all these amenities and rules that they had in the city, but they moved away from those to get. It it's, it's something I don't really know how to answer. It is, you know, they they move out of the city to get away from what they want to turn us back into.
Well, I know.
Yeah, you know what I mean.
Okay. One question. RLI is working with Fort Leavenworth to try to get individuals to visit small farms. Do you know anyone that might be interested? I don't.
I heard you talking about Watkins Ranch. You know how to get all those folks because they're my cousin.
We do. Yeah.
Tanya and Mike, Mikey's number and stuff.
All right.
Great idea. Yeah.
Okay. And then here's another one from Angelina. Will the county look at leasing out their county-owned land to energy, solar slash wind or electric vehicle charging stations, leasing or cell tower leases for more tax revenue?
If it would work that way, we're open to anything. But as far as winds, they need big tracks. The county doesn't really own much ground. So, I mean, you were open to any ideas like that. But in in reality, I'm not sure there'd be a whole lot of interest. But sure.
Okay, so. Okay, so let's wrap this up. One final question. What, are there anything, I mean, new items of business or things coming down the pipe that you'd like to share? I know there's like a work session coming up about economic development. There's, I think, some work with wind energy regulations or, you know, just what, anything new that you want to share with us?
Well, tomorrow's meeting, yeah, we're having a work session with our new economic development director. You know, one of the things that when I started, for the last twenty five years, we've had LCDC or LAD, I think they were called earlier. And trying to get economic development, you know, off the ground in this county is a big priority. Because like I said, the the biggest taxpayers are business and industry. So if you can get that, then you can save the taxpayers even more money. Problem is, first thing they do is they look at rooftops. So until you have a nucleus of residential houses in a certain area that's congested enough, they don't, you, it's hard to draw them here. But that's one big thing that we're trying to get off the ground is our new economic development director and a plan in place to figure out where to go from here. The one fifty two bridge, I'm pushing that as hard as I can. I think that answers all of our issues. Economic development should be our our biggest cheerleader on this because we could fill our industrial parks overnight if that bridge were to get completed. The the task force for the taxation that I was talking about with Senator Tyson. We're we're trying to get that off the ground. It's probably going to hit a little hiccup because she's running for treasurer right now. So until the elections, I think there's probably not going to be a whole lot down there. But I'm excited that at least now there's some talk about they they do see where the real issues are. Which, we haven't heard that in the last three or four years. They're like, oh, the county needs to lower their mill levy. That'll fix the problem. And we're like, that tells me you don't understand what the problem is. So there's that. Yeah, I think agritourism, we want to try to get a handle on what agritourism is. And I think if anybody's familiar with Napa Valley, they they're kind of a role model for the direction that I think a couple of our vineyards in Leavenworth County are taking. That could be a huge windfall for us for relieving some property taxes.
Okay, well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. And for all the guests, thank you for being here. Next month, we're going to have a presentation about the Leavenworth State Fishing Lake. Now, I will, a speaker from the Kansas Wildlife and Parks. And then also the Tonganoxi Historical Society will be there to share some photos and tell us a little bit about the history. And that will be an in-person event in Tonganoxi at the Historical Society. So watch for the event notice on our Facebook page. Again, thanks and have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, guys. Bye-bye.